Pastor of the McDonough Christian Church, and if you would, remain standing for the pledge to the flag.
Pray with me, please. Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to gather tonight, the uniqueness of this nation, Father, where citizens can come and be heard. Father, I pray for the leadership of this county. Lord, often it's a thankless job and hard to please the majority of folks. So, God, I ask that you would give them wisdom. Your word says that when we seek you, that we'll find you. And give them the ability to be discerning in all that they do. Father, tonight, we pray for our nation as a whole, Lord. And when so many are in currents that are traveling away from you, we just pray, Father, that we would have the strength and the determination, Lord, to continue to paddle in a way that is pleasing to you and God honoring, that we would serve our brothers and sisters, and we'd make a difference with the life that you've entrusted to us. And tonight, God, I'm especially grateful for our public servants here in the county. Those 911 operators that are on call 24/7, that when we need them, they're there. Father, for our firefighters who are willing to go into the fire and into danger. And for our officers and our deputies, Lord, our correction officers, and so many people, Lord, that while we're sleeping, they're awake. And they give us a peace, Father. They protect and serve us, and we're grateful for that. For the teachers that are here tonight, God, and for this week, as we enter into a time of graduation for the students of Henry County, Father, we're grateful. We're grateful for what we're able to receive through the education that is rendered here in Henry County. And, Father, for those tonight like Matty, who've never been to a commissioners meeting. Father, for citizens who come out tonight, we're grateful. We're grateful that our voice can be heard in the uniqueness again of this land. And so, Father, tonight, bless all that is said and done. Give wisdom and discernment to those who leave. And, Lord, we're gonna try our best to honor you in all we do and the way we behave and conduct ourselves, that you would receive all glory and all honor. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm showing 6:30 with the regular Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM, May the 17th, 2016, meeting come to order. I would like to ask the board to amend the published agenda to remove item 18. And for those that's keeping track, 18 would be on page three, under County Attorney. I want to ask that they remove the public comment policy, Patrick Docstrider, exhibit Having said that, does somebody move in that direction or have any other amendments?
O two pro.
Kevin Motion, District Three.
Same.
Second, District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So, if you're here for that issue, it is removed off of the agenda. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing National Emergency Medical Services Week, and I will ask our communication director, if she would be so kind as to read it. And then, we got any people here to take that with pictures?
I'm sorry?
Do we have any people that's, we're gonna take pictures with?
I believe so, yes.
That was a joke.
Good evening, Commissioner, I mean Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, we have a proclamation designating the week of May 15th through 21st, 2016, as National Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services are vital public service, and whereas members of the Henry County Fire Department are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of physicians, nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas the members of the Henry County Fire Department engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the week of May 15th through 21st be known as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme "Call to Care," and we encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners wishes to express its sincerest appreciation for the vital contributions that EMS professionals make in our community each and every day, the 17th of May, 2016, signed by Chairman Tommy Smith, attested by County Clerk Stephanie Braun. And we have Fire Chief Brad Johnson here for a few words.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. We do want to recognize our fine men and women of the Henry County Fire Department for what they do every day. If you know, about 75% of our calls are emergency medical calls, and we are cross-trained department. We're an ALS transport department also. So far this year, we have almost 8,000 patient contacts, have transported just under, or just around 5,500 patients to the hospital just in 2016. One of the things we're very proud of is our recent change in our philosophy in emergency care for cardiac care, and by the new programs for our auto pulse, and by the new rescue CPR initiation, we did, being one of the first in the state to do that, we have seen a 25% increase in our return to spontaneous circulation, which means a cardiac arrest is bringing someone back to life. We're very excited about that. And we have a 10% increase in patients actually leaving the hospital after a cardiac arrest and going back to their family. But we do have an EMS here in Henry County, but we call our EMS the Emergency Medical System. Our system's important from you guys making it a priority for our public safety, making it a priority to fund our initiatives for a better community, a safer community, from our dispatchers that provide information to us, to the call, to responders, including our police departments, the other fire departments in our community that get there first. We work together as a team to make sure we're doing the right things. The county, they're putting AEDs in the county buildings now, it makes a difference. And we just want to thank you for support. And if I would, if you guys would stand up, you know, Henry County Fire Department personnel, stand up. And again, thank you. I want to thank these men and women for what they do every day. They make us proud as a department, and make me proud to be their leader today. Thank you.
Next, we have recognition of students' artwork for our student initiative.
Chairman and Commissioners, tonight, the Henry County Board of Commissioners is recognizing Henry County schools and local art students for taking part in the Henry County Arts Initiative, which is a partnership between Henry County schools and Henry County government, allowing for the students' beautiful artwork to brighten the walls of the county administration building. For the past five years, art teachers from around the school district have submitted students' artwork to be displayed. Coordinated by Joanie Bowen, art teacher for Henry County Schools, selected art has been on loan to Henry County Government to be matted and framed in a professional manner and displayed for employees and the public to enjoy. I can't say enough about how much the students' artwork means to the walls of our atrium and in this building. They brighten the building and make such an incredible impact. Everyone who comes into this building comments about the beautiful art. We are truly honored that the students, their families, and their teachers share this art with us, and we are in awe of the students' talent. Some of those students are here with us tonight and will now recognize them with certificates of achievement. And so, if it's okay, I'm gonna call them, first, the elementary school students, then middle school, then high school. And if you're here, just come up and get your certificate. DeShaw Beaman, Red Oak Elementary School. Ella Biffle, Union Grove Elementary School. Santana Bryant, Stockbridge Elementary School. Mason Danzinger, Woodland Elementary School. Shania De Sears, Oakland Elementary School. Kendall Dow, Eastlake Elementary School. Julie Friend, Woodland Elementary School. Kara Gladden, Stockbridge Elementary. Elliot Gullian, Walnut Creek Elementary. Alyssa Harmon, Luella Elementary. Chloe Hedge, Wesley Lakes Elementary. Madison Hoffman, Ola Elementary. Jonathan Ken, Oakland, Woodland Elementary. Myla Lee, Pleasant Grove Elementary. JoJo Needlinger, Union Grove Elementary. Gage Osterhout, Rock Spring Elementary. Santana Bryant, Stockbridge Elementary. And Ella Biffle, Union Grove. All right, we have a few middle school students. We have Ansley Mathis, Union Grove Middle School. Joshua Manager, Hampton Middle School. Abby Mercurio, Ola Middle School. Haley Reed, Union Grove Middle School. And David Thompson, Hampton Middle School. Commissioners, I have an elementary school student, John Wilkinson. Lacey Brown, Locust Grove High School. Isabella Cormier, Ola High School. Laura Davis, Union Grove High School. Shelby Ferguson, Henry County High School. Sarah Hensley, Ola High School. Haley Cooler, Ola High School.
Those of you that would like to leave, we'll have a little lull time here for those that like to go home and do your homework. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comments speaker form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. Each person who addresses this board shall not make any personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of this board's staff or general public. Any person who makes such remarks or who utters loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language, or engages in any disorderly conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any board meeting, shall, at the discretion of the chairman or a majority of the board, be barred from further audience before the board during that meeting. Having said that, I'm gonna take these in order that they signed up. First, we'll recognize Mr. Bishop Brier, if you would, come to the podium, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Bishop Irving Brier. I live at 111 Barrington Parkway in Stockbridge, Georgia. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. How are you this evening?
Fine, thank you.
Good. I expressly came here tonight because of the time I've been spending in the academy for the Police Department for citizens, and I told the Fire Department, they're next with me. And it's a good way for us to get acquainted with what they do, how they do it, and how they feel about things. I'm glad that the budget that we have before us, the proposed budget, will have increases for both their departments. Public safety is important. People worry about crime and incidents, and you keep good reports and records. But public safety, we should know, starts with us, each one of us, how we govern ourselves, how we govern our homes, how we raise our children, and hopefully when they're out. But when they stand out for another reason, some of the best people in the world are sitting behind me, representing the police and the Fire Department. And I hope that the increase will be one that will help us along. In the last five years, we've lost over 100 officers, as you know. After two years, they can leave. We've trained them, taken care of them, and it's estimated that we lose about $5 million in the last five years because of that. I wish that law could change so that we can keep them longer, especially if they went through the police academy. But we need to do everything that we can to keep good people in our ranks. I know something about good people in the ranks because I spent 31 years in the military. I spent from Vietnam to 9/11 into Iraq, and even then, we would see some of our best leave after they got trained to go other places. We have to do everything we can to keep our best. After all, they become part of the community, and they began to work with the community. And that's an important part of what we do every day. And as you know, we're now in the climate of doing the nights out. All of this is good, but it is no good if we have a shortage. And I want to tell you that riding along in a sector in the north-east of this county late at night, that was some experience to be with the officers and see young men and women vandalizing mailboxes, and then the police have to coordinate with each other to get from one area to another so they can find out who it was, and it's not an easy job. But I'll tell you what, the people that I've met, there are a lot of people that talk about police officers, okay, say 2.5% total throughout the world. But we have some good officers, and you know it and I know it. And we need to do everything we can to keep them on. And one of the things is to give them the money that they need to do their job, but increase their pay so they will not leave us. They will stay with us and their families right here in Henry County, one of the best places in the world to live. Thank you very much, Chairman and Commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Carl Swinson.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Carl Swinson. I live at 43 Thurman Road in Stockbridge, Georgia, the unincorporated part. Gentlemen, you've heard me say a lot of things that had to do with the bad side of governance. Tonight, before I start, I want to say that everything that you've done with the Fire and Police Department deserves not only the applause for these gentlemen, but it also deserves the applause for you for a job well done in keeping them here. Thank you. All right. I'm here tonight because, in addition to that, we see a propensity of certain members of this board to try and overstep their bounds. And one of the things they are trying to overstep is our constitutional right to free speech. That is an issue that's been tabled tonight, but just because it's tabled doesn't mean it's not gonna come back, just like herpes. Sorry, but we got problems with this. Now, gentlemen, we can nip this in the bud. We can nip it in the bud. We can have you guys make a resolution that this particular ordinance, or whatever you call it, that's on the books, that allows for the agenda items, that allows for the five minutes, and allows it for the time that we've got, that it not be interfered with, because the people of this county have no other way of getting their feelings expressed to you. This is very important. It's important to the process. You may not like what we have to say when we come up here, but we have every right to say it, and people have every right to hear it. And if it was one of my wishes, it would be that the children of this county would be brought here to see the process, to see what happens, to see what this governance is all about. We need to teach them, and we need to teach them well, because they are the future of this county. And I appreciate, again, the fact that you guys are honoring them on a fairly regular basis. Again, good job. But if you would, dig deep into your souls, dig deep into your hearts, and dig deep into the documents that you have signed that are your oaths of office. Those are the contract you have with us. We don't get any rights from the Constitution. That Constitution that you take an oath to is your compact with us, that you will not overstep your bounds. One of them is free speech, and that's why a lot of people showed up here tonight. I am particularly concerned that you would go to such extremes. I know it's not all of you, and I'm not gonna point fingers, but I want you to look inside of your hearts and your souls and tell me what, in God's name, would possess you to try and deny the people, the good people of Henry County, their right to redress, their right to express themselves in front of this board. You have nothing to hide. Be right for us. Do what you are supposed to do. Drop this thing forever, and if you can, make a resolution where nobody can touch that again, because it's the only place we have to show you what we feel are the problems that we might have within the county.
Gentlemen, you've heard me say a lot of things that had to do with the bad side of governance. Tonight, before I start, I want to say that everything that you've done with the Fire and Police Department deserves not only the applause for these gentlemen, but it also deserves the applause for you, for a job well done in keeping them here. Thank you. All right. I'm here tonight because, in addition to that, we see a propensity of certain members of this board to try and overstep their bounds. And one of the things they are trying to overstep is our constitutional right to free speech. That is an issue that's been tabled tonight, but just because it's tabled doesn't mean it's not gonna come back, just like herpes. Sorry, but we got problems with this. Now, gentlemen, we can nip this in the bud. We can nip it in the bud. We can have you guys make a resolution that this particular ordinance, or whatever you call it, that's on the books, that allows for the agenda items, that allows for the five minutes, and allows it for the time that we've got, that it not be interfered with, because the people of this county have no other way of getting their feelings expressed to you. This is very important. It's important to the process. You may not like what we have to say when we come up here, but we have every right to say it. And people have every right to hear it. And if it was one of my wishes, it would be that the children of this county would be brought here to see the process, to see what happens, to see what this governance is all about. We need to teach them, and we need to teach them well, because they are the future of this county. And I appreciate, again, the fact that you guys are honoring them on a fairly regular basis. Again, good job. But if you would, dig deep into your souls, dig deep into your hearts, and dig deep into the documents that you have signed, that are your oaths of office. Those are the contract you have with us. We don't get any rights from the Constitution. That Constitution that you take an oath to is your compact with us, that you will not overstep your bounds. One of them is free speech. And that's why a lot of people showed up here tonight. I am particularly concerned that you would go to such extremes. I know it's not all of you. And I'm not gonna point fingers. But I want you to look inside of your hearts and your souls, and tell me what, in God's name, would possess you to try and deny the people, the good people of Henry County, their right to redress, their right to express themselves in front of this board. You have nothing to hide. Be right for us. Do what you are supposed to do. Drop this thing forever. And if you can, make a resolution where nobody can touch that again, because it's the only place we have to show you what we feel are the problems that we might have within the county. I won't belabor the point, but I hope you'll do the right thing and come up with a different resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Schuman.
Good evening, Chairman Smith and Board of Commissioners. I'm David Schopman. I am the president of the Heritage Ridge Homeowners Association. I represent one hundred and sixty-seven homes in our subdivision. And I'm here tonight to talk about one of the agenda items that's on your list for a little bit later this evening, item number thirteen B. But before I do that, I'd like to ask all the residents of the Heritage Ridge Homeowners Association who are here tonight to stand. We came with a small contingent this evening, just so that you know that it's not one voice that's speaking tonight. Item thirteen B on your agenda has to do with the roundabout that's being constructed later this fall, I guess, is the planned date for that construction at Jodico and Blackhall Road. And our subdivision is in full support of that construction. However, in the plans, and I did have some copies of those plans that you'll be seeing, I'm sure, a little bit later, but if I can get the overhead...
It's on.
Okay.
All right, it's on, let it start.
All right, that's probably not gonna show up, but that's okay. You'll see, if you have your... Okay. Your agenda item, when you look at the exhibits for that, you're gonna be talking about some of the right-of-way issues associated with this project. When we looked at these plans back in January with the Henry County DOT, we asked them to consider adding a left-turn lane on the westbound side of heading out of the circle or out of the roundabout heading towards Clayton County. Our subdivision entrance is about a hundred feet to the west of the exit from the roundabout. We're the first subdivision on the left. And our concern is, homeowners in there, as we try to turn into our subdivision, that traffic will stop in that left lane, and right now, it's only designed to be a one-lane or two-lane road, one lane in each direction, and that when we stop to turn into our main entrance to our subdivision, that we're gonna cause cars to back up behind us, and by doing so, cause cars to back up into the roundabout, and potentially cause not only traffic congestion, but also potentially accidents, as people are trying to figure out what to do while they're in this roundabout. So we're asking that you look at the entrance, the entranceway, this is the current design, as you can see it on your laptops. That's the current plan with the right-of-way going to the north side of Jodico Road into a vacant field, and it's designed to take just a small amount of property there. But what we're proposing is that you consider extending that, so that we can have at least a two-car-length turn lane, to allow at least two cars to pull into that left turn lane, if you will, while the rest of the traffic bypasses on the right and continues westbound on Jodico Road. At this early stage, obviously, it would just be required that we extend the right-of-way purchase a little more to the north side of the road, but we'd like to have you consider that as you explore the options associated with Agenda Item thirteen B. If there's no questions, or...
Is this a SPOLOSH project or DOT? Who's here?
It's a... As I understand, it's a SPOLOSH project.
Rocky, you mind answering a couple of questions?
Hey, Rocky, how are you?
Valid concern. What's the distance between, you know, the intersection distance?
It's roughly five hundred feet from the roundabout to the entrance of the subdivision.
And there's nothing put in there for stacking on that left turn? Stacking on the left turn?
Right now, since this is going through the... We actually have in federal funds on this project. We just cannot just add it...
I understand.
Just to, you know, we have to go through a process, going through GDOT. So right now, what we're doing, we have heard the concerns from David, and we're gonna be doing a warrant study...
Okay.
To see if it warrants to add a left turn. If it does, then we can bring that, take that to GDOT, for them to allow us to include that into the project, incorporate it.
And that's been part of the ongoing discussion that we've had with the DOT, with the Board of Commissioners, and Rocky about that. And I think today was the day that the county was supposed to come out and do the study for that, or it was supposed to be today, tomorrow, and Thursday, but nobody came out. There was no road counter put out today. But it would've been a good day to do that, because the traffic was all backed up on Jodico, as there was an accident on the highway, as it normally is on an afternoon or evening after four-thirty.
Correct. And we didn't have that part on our design contract, so we reached out to County DOT, and they were gonna do the work for us to do the warrant study. So I will follow up tomorrow with County DOT and C-Wide. We didn't have those counters out there, but they were supposed to.
Not my district, but valid concern.
District two.
District two. I got you, but I'm the engineer here, so... Valid concern. Follow through, Rocky, and then make sure to get back with Brian, and Brian, you get back with me, and we'll get back with you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I do feel you have a valid concern there, so...
Thank you.
David, always a pleasure.
Always a pleasure, too, Brian. Thank you.
Kimberly Del Rosario, Rose Arrio, and daughter?
Rosario. Good evening, Commissioner Smith and gentlemen. My name is Kimberly Del Rosario, and I want to talk to y'all about something that's not on tonight's agenda, but it's something you'll be voting on in the near future. I live at seven-two-two Race Track Road. I own five acres, and it backs up to Shining Light Ministries. In the three years I have lived there, I have had multiple concerns about Shining Light Ministries and what it offers our community. I know it's offered me a chance for my twelve-year-old daughter that has had bone cancer, not to be able to go out in our yard to be terrified, because these women have trespassed on our property. I also know that a police report I filed, after two months, I was called and told to drop those charges. This lady was having a major crisis. Well, guess what? I'm a mom, I'm having a major crisis. My twelve-year-old should be able to go out on my five-acre property and enjoy her life, as any typical child should be able to. We find multiple altercations that happen at the back of our property. We have found alcoholic bottles and all sorts of different items thrown at the back of our property that aren't from us. But we have a lot of concerns. They're wanting to make this a bigger place. Hey, I'm all about reform, I'm all about helping. If I believe in something, I stand and give all my time to. But this is my property, this is my community, and I didn't get a chance Thursday night to come out here and address this. The neighbors do not want it made larger. We don't like it. We've all had problems. Don't trespass on my property. But I came to Henry County and bought five acres and a home to be able to raise my child and to be able to live. My child should have that right and not be scared of these women over there. You should have to, each and every one of you, I would say, come out there and look. Go out about twelve, one o'clock in the morning, you'll see what I'm talking about. I'm talking about loud party music. I'm talking about alcohol. I'm talking about odd car lights in the middle of the night. It's not what it's supposed to be. You make it even larger, you're making it a larger problem for me and my family and the other residents of the community. I don't know, but it's not what it's all supposed to be. I've checked into it. There's something not right. You're wanting to expand a problem. They're wanting to buy people's land. Guess what? We don't want to sell. We came to Henry County to grow. But I have five acres that my child should be able to enjoy. We have farm animals, we have a garden. My child is limited because of her disabilities from cancer. We bought that property for her to be able to play out in our yard and to walk the track that we have around our home, because she can't do that at school, because of the multi-children, and the fact that she does not have a bone in her leg, she has concrete, because of some medical issues. So I'm asking you to take in consideration my twelve-year-old child, my husband and myself, and all the other people in our neighborhood that do not want this. It's not fair to us. You're the ones, you get to make that decision. I don't. But you can listen to me as a mother and look at my twelve-year-old child that is not enjoying an everyday life because of this. No child, no parent should be scared to put their child out on five acres. It's not right. But you need to take in consideration, and I ask any of you, come out and look. Come out at night and see what goes on, because it's not what it is. I thank you for your time, I thank you for your consideration, but give us, the people of the community, a chance to speak. Come talk to us and come see what it is, because it's not what you think it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. County Manager, would you follow up with this, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Mr. Board Members. My name is Austin Joseph, and I'm here on behalf of free speech. As a young person who aspires to hold public office and one day become President of the United States, I feel compelled to share my thoughts on the proposals made further to limit, and not completely, but eliminate, public comment from the proceedings of these meetings. My parents are military veterans, and they fought to protect us and all of our rights as citizens for this great country, and that includes free speech. So this is an issue that is near and dear to me. We, as American citizens, are guaranteed by the First Amendment the right to voice and concern our opinions on public matters in public forums and petition our government if we feel as if it's not working in our best interest. So you are elected officials and are tasked with protecting and representing us for this right. And I believe that it's the right of free speech that should never be limited or bridged simply because the government does not like what a citizen is saying. There is a reason that our founding fathers made this our First Amendment, so you guys cannot pass anything that hinders that. Make no mistake about this, issues regarding public money, public property, public contracts, and evolving all these matters are issues of public concern and should not have to be discussed privately. They should be able to be discussed like this. As a young person and a lover of history, I am troubled by the notion that government officials in our county would use their power to curtail or limit these rights. The day that tax-paying citizens of Henry County are ushered into backrooms and given limited access to the very people whom they put in office is the day that public corruption and backroom deals will be ruled. When each of you took office, you swore to uphold and defend the Constitution. So I urge each member of this board to honor and uphold the oath that you took to serve the citizens of this county, and by listening to our grievances, as opposed to coming up with ways to limit or curtail this manner by which we present. This building and television cameras used to make these meetings accessible to all citizens of Henry County were paid for with our tax dollars. The board should not reject today or in the future any attempt to diminish an access to this public forum. That's the people's forum, and it's our right. Thank you.
Ms. Kathy Pilaski. Okay. I'm on the market, gone. Mr. Steve Richardson.
Steve Richardson, 207 Wind Drive, Hampton, Georgia. I appreciate the opportunity. The first gentleman you have stole most of my thunder, but just to add a little bit to it, I just want the people of this county to know that if we're adding two more malls, that's gonna be a lot of police presence we need, because obviously, there's gonna be a lot of activity there. And then, of course, I don't know if anybody knows what Stockbridge is doing with Pinkerton Security, whatever that is, so, you know, I ain't figured that one out yet, so I have no comment, because I don't know. But, you know, I always like to come up here with paperwork, and so nobody can say, you know, anything was contrived or made up, or whatever. We try to prove, you know, beyond a shadow of a doubt what goes on. And I don't know... I don't know if you guys can see that, but there's about forty of us out there this morning with all kind of equipment. There's two tractor trailers and a Mercury Mountaineer that's reduced to the size of a freaking Barbie car your grandkid drives, with no exaggeration. It took about an hour or so to get that feller out of there. And if that wasn't enough to get hit by two tractor trailers, bless his heart, on the way to Melanin Medical Center, the ambulance was involved in a wreck, because somebody in Atlanta can't drive. That was at six-twenty this afternoon at Record One, there that gentleman stands, because of what these efforts of these fellers right here. That's why these guys deserve everything they can get and then some. So I'm up here to support the budget, support the reset, whatever y'all call it. Frankly, I don't care what you call it, you just need to pay them. But we need to continue this budget fight, we need to continue... We're a hundred and seventeen officers short now. Then you got Stockbridge going off in the wild, wild west, whatever the hell they're doing. And then you got two more malls you're gonna put in here. So all we're doing is increasing the calls for fire and police and everybody else, and we're not doing nothing. So basically, I just want to come up here and say, appreciate you stepping up and finally doing something. It's a good start, but we need to continue the fight and support these gentlemen, because they're out there putting their lives on the line for us. And if y'all think, and there's a lot of folks in here, I know, because I get behind them on that interstate, are scared half to death to be on that interstate. And if you're scared in the car, try standing out there with them whizzing by you at seventy, eighty miles an hour. And it's only gonna get worse for these guys, as they put these reversible lanes in there. It's just worse. And then you can't get through the gore and the traffic because of all the backlog, which makes it even harder for us as responders. So I just want to come up here and thank you for what effort was put into it, but I think we need to keep our foot on the gas, and we need to give these ladies and gentlemen what they're worth. We need to hire the hundred and seventeen, we're short. I think we're building three more fire stations. I think we got the buildings and the equipment. You got close to thirty guys that are coming up on retirement age. It's another fifty, sixty guys to run those houses, plus the guys that are retiring, so there's another hundred guys you need, you know? And they don't make them like they used to. So bottom line is, I just want to come up here and thank them for what happened this morning, and let everybody know in this county, I know there's pictures on social media, I don't do social media, but this guy's alive because of the efforts of these cats right here. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. Larry Maury.
Mr. Chairman, I think you already have the right to control a meeting already in your bylaws. The second thing I'd like to add is, each one of you should sign an agreement that you won't never do this again. Because if you sign something to stop the riots, you need to go back and study Thomas Jefferson and why he sat out in the middle of a field. And ask him, what was he doing? He said, "I'm trying to get freedom right, so that we'll never lose it." So you need to remember that. Thank goodness for these people that are here tonight. All you first offenders, too, remember, this is the only right you got. remember, this is the only right you got, and you better not give it up, or we lose everything in America. I want to talk about trucks. I started a few months ago, and they told me that Avalon is a city street. So I went to the DOT, and they said, "Well, it's a county thing, and then it's a city thing." And, "Well, it's coming out on 55." Well, it's not. It's coming out on Avalon. So I don't, y'all figure out who controls that, the city, the county, the state. But let's go on down 155 a little bit further. I don't know if y'all remember this, but a year or so ago, a lady run under a semi. Well, you need to come out there at night and see these semis try to cross 155 at night with no lights. You ought to see trucks trying to turn around at night with no lights. Y'all need to come see that. You need to come see what's going on on 155, and they're building seven more Now here's the idiocracy of it all. A truck takes the space of four and a half cars, and you're building decelerated lanes like you're building them for a car. Do y'all hear what I'm saying? A truck with 50,000 pounds, how's he going to start from zero and get fast enough to get out in the highway? The same as a car. Where is the intelligence of that design and layout?
Are you talking about the east side or the Greenwood Industrial Park?
I'm talking about all the way up 155. Let's go to Home Depot. They're putting brand-new and they're building two more right beside you. Same thing.
Because I've written, you know, Wade is our head of DOT. He can attest that we've, that, you know, I don't know why the state, when they re-topped 155 for those turn lanes, when they came in there, they put those deceleration lanes. It's even too short for a car.
Brian, you ain't got to issue a CO until they get the traffic right, son. You don't have to let them move in here until they get, us come back this side of there. There's a little county street that turns to the left. You need to be out there, sir. And you're building two new facilities on each side. To come out at one little street, and a woman got killed there less than two years ago at the same spot, and now we adding two more. You know what it's going to take? It's going to take a class-action lawsuit, Mr. Tommy, to stop this foolishness, because what's going on out there is criminal. It's criminals of these women that have to drive out there and risk their lives every day. And I'm going to finish with this. Y'all talk about excess money with the budget and not funding this, and God knows them men right there need funds. And we got vehicles with 200,000 miles on them. I think we had a ladder truck went crazy this week because we ain't maintaining our stuff. And last week, I found out y'all ain't even got a patching machine with staff to fix potholes. And our highways out in the county are literally going to pot. If you don't believe that, get in the truck and come, and I'll go with you and show you. I've been all over it. It's a disaster, and it's getting worse every day because you're not patching anything. Lack of leadership comes from the top, and if you ain't traveling around this county and seeing what the mess of these roads is, you need to quit. And the last thing is this. When an accident happens on 75 or traffic gets backed up, those trucks do this. They hit the side roads. You ought to have the HPC officers start writing tickets on these trucks that get off on these two-lane roads and tear them all to pieces. When a truck rear axle turns and on these little old side streets, it literally tears the gravel up, the pavement up, because they're not made to handle that kind of weight. And the other night, we were meeting, and there goes the truck on a little two-lane city street because he's off of 75 and he's lost. You got to, if y'all going to serve, you need to serve or quit.
Next, we recognize Mr. Bill Tony for 15 minutes.
Bill Tony, 1652 Highway 155 North, McDonough. I'd like to thank you guys. Y'all doing a great job. I mean, they doing a great job. What I'd like to talk about is your First Amendment rights. This is probably one of the things that you have to have to maintain, which, you know, a freedom that we have. I know that you guys are all busy, and I know that you got other jobs and everything to do, but last week, I called all six of you guys to talk to you about the First Amendment right and what was coming up at the meeting. Out of the six of you, I got two calls back, and I thank you, Mr. Barham, and I thank you, Mr. Smith. The rest of you, I didn't get a call back. Now, this is the only time that anybody can come forward. I do believe that you should have a civil tongue, both ways, from y'all and from this side. Now, we're all grown people, and we can all, you know, kind of do it in the right way. Now, I've been attacked here. I've been attacked by a county manager. He's called me names. He told me I was lower than a possum. I needed to be in a dumpster. I've had bogus letters come at me from Mr. Preston, and it's just, you know, it's a two-way street. I try to deal with y'all with respect. I try to bring things in a civil manner, and I think that when I bring something to you, you know, it's for the good of the people, and I hope you all see it that way. The way that y'all were going to go tonight, according to what I got from Stephanie this week, was option one. I know it's off the table. Which limits it down to three minutes. You give 15 minutes, and you have five speakers. That's it. To me, that one's really a pretty bad one. Option two, five minutes, 30 minutes, maximum time, six speakers. And you're wanting to move these things out of the boardroom without the cameras. That's not good right there. Your option three was 15 minutes prior to the meeting that y'all would talk to people off-camera. Three minutes for public, 15 allocated to the comment portion. And that's it. Your first two amendments, the freedom of speech and the freedom to bear arms, that's probably two of the best. These guys, when they were writing this thing, they knew that there was going to be problems down the road. They knew that you were going to have people to do, to let power go to their head, and they wrote it all up to protect us, and I believe in that. You can't have laws that every time it's an inconvenience or every time somebody goes against you, like House Bill 554, that we fought, and it was rushed through, I think, by Mr. Jeffries, if I'm not mistaken, which took the right away from Mr. Smith, some of the power away from him, and to where they could kind of calm him down because we had some issues of conflict of interest. Anytime you have conflicts of interest, it's not good. You need to have somebody to stand right here and say something about it. Like I told you before, I pay taxes on seven houses in this county, and I feel like I have the right, and I hope you feel like it. And the young man that was up here a few minutes ago, he nailed everything pretty well. I totally respect, and I like to see the youth coming forward and understanding what this thing's really all about, and that we all have rights. And, you know, y'all handle, the budget this year is going to be, what, $144 million? One raise of your hand, one raise of your hand means a lot. You need to be held accountable for it, all six of you, and all six of you vote. My dad, he was, he, I get emotional on this one. He fought in Germany, World War II. He came back. He wasn't the same guy that left. I promise you. I had two brothers, Vietnam, and they were willing to die for this right here. Mr. Smith, I think you served. Mr. Blake, you served, and I want to thank you for your service that you did. Air Force, them thinking for both of you. So, you know, it's, you know, y'all are willing to lay down your life, and you took an oath to do that. These guys right here, I mean, they're out here, you got to do it right, you got to do it the right way. I hope that you've had, I know that, I feel like that you kind of lost it last meeting, Mr. Preston, and said a few things that, you know, might not, might have had some time to think about it. And, you know, all of us think, you know, we're going to speak out of turn sometime. I hope tonight's been an eye-opener for everybody, and I hope y'all don't, you know, let me show you this one, and then I'll, I think I'll be done with it. Mr. Maddox signed in. Resolution 0301. I'd like to see that stand. I think it's worked really well since 2003. I don't see any reason to change it. I hope y'all are on my side on that one. Now, as far as coming up here and getting ugly with you and calling your names and all that stuff, I don't know of any time I've ever called anybody here a name. And I've tried to keep it on a civil level and a civil tongue. And, you know, I just expect the same out of y'all. I sure do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to the record, Tony indicated the county manager called him a possum. That wasn't this county manager.
Okay, for the record. Next, we'll have the presentation of the proposed 2016-2017 budget. And I'm going to say for the record, we're going to do this in two resolutions. It's going to be the same budget, but the first resolution will be a resolution that the Board of Commissioners authorize an acceptance of the 2016 Henry County Public Safety proposed pay grades and starting salaries. And that will be first when it gets through the presentation, and then we will adopt the 2016-2017 budget, which the pay is included in that. So having said that, I yield the floor to the speakers.
First, to the audience, I apologize that it's only getting darker by the minute, so you're not going to be able to see some of the things we're talking about. The board can see them online, and we had this scheduled to be replaced. We thought this was going to last another couple of weeks. It hasn't done so well for me, so I apologize for that.
Commissioners, good evening. This evening, I'm pleased to present the 2017 proposed budget for your consideration and comment. The budget is a plan and it's a summation of all the transactions necessary to implement the vision and action plans as determined by the elected officials and to provide for the sustainable services and facilities that all Henry County residents deserve. All that Henry County does springs forth from this work, and it's one of the most important responsibilities we have as public services. It is with that in mind that I began this process several months ago with a meeting with all the staff and all the constitutional officers, and we laid out the framework where we'd have a base budget. It's not a zero line item budget, but it's a base budget, where we start off with what you did last year, minus everything that was additional funding, grants, specialty purchases, and things like that. Now apparent on this particular budget is that's different from the most. Is this the first time we've had a five-year plan? And this is your roadmap going forward. And when I use this, the board approves this budget, then it gives me the affirmation that there are things in this budget the board wants to implement, and I will start the process of getting these actions in place. It's apparent to me that every employee has contributed in some fashion to these, and their fingerprints are all over this budget. And I guess there's a lot of folks out here that's got a lot more fingerprints on the budget than they had intended. And I'm referring to the public safety reset and some of the reviews we've had with the commissioners. This was a huge undertaking by staff. It's a first, five-year plan, first time we've ever done it, and you've got to start from scratch, and you have to look forward. So I want to publicly express my most sincere appreciation to staff for their efforts. This was a difficult assignment, and you've accomplished a remarkable achievement that will serve Henry County as a roadmap to your bright future. I'm proud to serve amongst those ranks, and I'm proud to present this budget to you. I also want to thank Sheriff Keith McBrer, Clerk of the Court, Barbara Harrison, Probate Judge Kelly Powell, and Tax Collector David Curry, the Henry County Constitutional Officers for their cooperation and patience during this process. They have provided valuable insight into their respective obligations and the citizens of Henry County's needs. The Chairman and Commissioners also want to acknowledge your efforts and support. The guidance and visions that you each have shared is the foundation of this document, and I think it made it better for the efforts that you've put into it. I also want to acknowledge Mr. Frank Alletter, our Finance Director and Assistant County Manager, Sherry Matthews, for their assistance in this process. And finally, I want to thank Ms. Anjusaro, our Budget Director. Ms. Sorrow has worked many long hours, weekends, days, nights, over and over, to walk me through this process and get us in here, and without her efforts, this budget wouldn't be what it is now, wouldn't be before you. So thank you very much. Commissioners, at this point, I'm going to give a summary of the general fund, and then we'll go into the base budget part of it, and Ms. Sorrow will take us through the expenditure We've got two resolutions before you, and...
Is there a five-year plan incorporated into this budget?
This budget is the first year of the five-year plan. I think in your first documentation you saw where we had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. The budget you're adopting is only year one. We said with the adoption of the plan, we knew that after we get through this first year, it will change the picture of next year.
But we're not voting on 2, 3, 4, 5?
No, sir, you are not. You can only vote on this one now because that's the way you're set up to adopt a budget. It is the roadmap, Commissioner, and I appreciate the opportunity to put that out there. We haven't seen the capital work. We haven't seen the operational pieces that staff has put together and the board has asked for. So this is our first shot. I keep calling it a roadmap, and that's what I think it is. You're only adopting one budget tonight. And that first, there's two resolutions we're going to do tonight. And first is to adopt the reset, and this is the public safety pay grades and the starting salaries. Now, this is all four of your public safety agencies.
Did you put this up?
This is a summary, and I think I can understand this.
Unfortunately, it won't show. The screen is darkened out. I mean, the light bulb is darkened. I mean, the light bulb is dimmed.
Is that on video?
Oh. Yeah. This way, you can point out the amounts for the reset and all the public safety that would be in the first resolution. And also, it would be simple just to compare 16 with 17. And just put your finger on the things that's affecting public safety. It's in the first resolution. And I'm looking at them right now.
Well, Chairman, following your suit on that...
Can you see that?
Not particularly, but I can see this one, so I'm all right with that.
Just show the part that's in the first resolution. Can you do that?
Yes.
I'm trying to help you over here, but the screen don't move.
Well, Mr. Chairman, in the, to try to make the flow work, before I get to this, I think I want to explain to you revenues before we get down to expenditures. I think that might be a bit more consistent with the flow. Commissioners, on your sheet, you'll see where the baseline budget was. Our projected revenue for 2016 was $130 million. We utilized about $4.2 million for fund balance to get us to an opening balance in a revenue of $134,672,534. Now, that would have been our base budget we started off this year. And we had some things that were just natural increases. We knew we had increases in insurances. We knew we had increased cost when we had other projects that went forward. And that got us to a base budget in our starting line of $137,174,938. And our proposal we have before you, that would contemplate using $5,385,280 for a grand total of your admin budget only, $142,560,218. Now, from the expenditure aspect, we'll go right into the resolution part. Then I'll read the resolution until you can act on that one. On your expenditure side, we have a total budget of $142, I'm sorry, $142. Our budget would be $142,645. The new positions upgrades for the general fund side totaled $1,067,435. The new positions for Parks Recreation and Hampton Center was $265,031. And the positions for the Henry probation services was $697,207. The ACC new term increases, the constitutional officers, was $16,00904. Now, the first adjustment in terms of salaries is we have a 4% increase excluding everybody in public safety. And that totals to be $1,250,691. The public safety reset for reset increases came to $2,129,699. And the public safety new positions with benefits, the request was and what we proposed is $594,774. The next two are the capital work that's going on, the public safety fire station 15 and the public safety fire department station 16 coming on the 17th. The Board of County Commissioners elected to fund the additional cost for insurances this year. Because our insurances went up, the board agreed and has offered to pay for that increase over our last year's premiums or our last year's cost. That came to be $529,102. That would have been distributed over the employees. The board elected to pay that. And I still have a line in there for the clinic for $500,000. That's less than the $750 it was last year. We've still got a couple of alternatives that we want to look at for the various services. Might look a little bit different, but we're still working on the clinic aspect of it. You've got total expenditures that equals the amount of revenue new. Your total expenditures would be $142,560,218. We have a balanced budget with a required fund balance of $35,640,055. Now, to go back up and look at the public safety component, may I go ahead and read the resolution?
Okay, we have a resolution before you. The resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing acceptance of the 2016 Henry County Public Safety proposed pay grade and starting salaries. Somebody move in that direction.
Do you guys mind if I take a, again? Do you mind if I take a minute to address the public?
We have comments. We have questions.
You guys good?
Yeah, you have the floor.
Thank you.
I yield the floor to the gentleman from District Four.
Chief, will you come up? Chief Nichols, you still back there? You come up. First, let me thank the public for coming out and support of my public safety initiative. Eight months, this has been my life. This has been the chief's life. This has been Major Goings' life. We're finally healed here, gentlemen. I cannot believe it. I'm shocked. And I wanted just to take a second, I hate to put you on the spot, Don, thanks so much. I wanted to take a second. Sheriff here?
I'm looking for the representative from the sheriff's office, ASO.
ASO? All right. I want to take a minute and let you guys just tell the public what we did. Because it's, I didn't do a raise. The simple thing to do would just be throw money at it, here we're going to do raises. It's not what we did. We did a complete and total reset. And we actually did a pay plan. And this is a long-term pay plan, very complicated. And to tell you that we had some ups and downs, there was many times where Chief would call me and say, "It's not going to happen." Or Major Goings would call me and say, "We can't get it to work." You'd call me and tell me, "Hey, you know, this just isn't working. We're not able to get together." And there's so many moving parts. When we start talking about putting the sheriff's department, the police department, and the fire department together and making one basic rank structure, which is a grade structure. We had to put everybody together. Added some positions in the police department. Fixed some things in the sheriff's department. Fixed some things in the fire department. Each department had their own individual problems. And each department needed individual problems fixed. And it was not a simple thing of just writing and getting it done. So, we've had countless hours. I know Major Goings has been just going at it nonstop. I know Deputy Foster, I know Sheriff's been going at it. And I know you guys have down at the fire department. It's been a long time coming. We've been over why we need to do it. I think we beat that horse about to death. So, we're not going to talk about that. But if you wouldn't mind, Chief, we'll start with you. Just give us a short blip of what we did for the people. Because I want them to know how we spent their money. Because it's a $2.1 million lick. And that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. But the main thing I want people to understand, we didn't just throw money at this. This was not everything on this. We had history, background, research. I mean, we've done a lot of work into this. So, Chief, I'm going to start with you.
Thank the Commissioner, Chairman. Commissioners also for this initiative. What is due for the fire department? I guess the biggest concern we've had so far is we're consistently inconsistent on how we do our promotions, how we have to bring people into our department. And over years, it kind of catches up with us in compression. Years ago, the fire department had a fire chief and firefighters. And that's 25, 30 years ago. And over time, we've added positions. We've added lieutenants, captains, battalions, chief shift commanders. And it's all compressed in. And also, over time, we've hadn't kept up with the raises, hadn't kept up with the downturn of the economy. Most people have not. But over the last few years, we're trying to come back. And our percentile was in the 40 percentile rate of where we should be for our firefighter EMTs, our firefighter paramedics. By adjusting our salaries, our starting salaries, and spreading them out where they should be, we took a year's service grade and tried to reset personnel where they should be. So, your eight-year person is not making the same as your two-year person. And our starting salaries are competitive. Now, are we the highest paid in the metro? We're not. We're in a 65, 70 percentile range. We want to, you know, work on what we have. But there definitely is an improvement for what we have in the past. Definitely an improvement for our personnel who do the great job every day. Now, I think another important thing, not doing the money, is a roadmap. We need a roadmap for success. We have great employees, great personnel. These men and women here are the best. They need a roadmap. They need a roadmap for where they start at to where they end their career. Where do we retire? And that roadmap starts as recruit firefighter, paramedic, police officer, 911 dispatcher, sheriff's deputy, a public safety officer. And it goes over and tells them, or shows them how to make a difference in their life so they want to stay in Henry County. So, they have a plan, not just, you know, ad hoc every year of uncertainty. They have a plan where they could be. So, that brings a better employee, brings a commitment to Henry County so we can keep our personnel for the long run. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.[1221.01][1221.01](APPLAUSE)
Well, some of what I'm going to say, and thank you for allowing me to come up here and speak to y'all, speak to the citizens. But some of what I'm going to say is similar to what he just stated. I look around me tonight and I see white shirts out here, which denote command staff members. These are individuals that have dedicated their entire career here at Henry County. And that's what we want officers to come do. Unfortunately, over the last five years, we've experienced about an 80% attrition rate with officers five years and less. That was our target. That was our goal. That's what we had to say. We've got to stop the bleeding. And every time somebody leaves my agency, our agency, we sit down with them and we say, "Why are you leaving? What are you seeking?" You know, we actually have a policy that we try and get them to stay. And most of them end up saying, "Chief, we love it here. We love the county. We love the feeling that this agency gives us, the family, the camaraderie, everything that we're searching for in a career we have here. We're just not financially able to support our families." And I can't argue with that. When somebody comes up and says, "Chief, I'm doing it for my family," I'd be doing the same thing. So, we've created a career development path. And we actually did that. My command staff was so dedicated, we said regardless of whether we have the money or not, we're going to give these fellows, these men and women, a career path to take off on. If you want to go into and be a detective, we're going to teach you how and what skills you need to have to become a detective. Whatever your dream is, and we're going to help you get there. Well, along comes this reset. And guess what? Now, this reset gives us financial resources. Not only it helps them to get on their career path and get where they want to go, but it gives them a financial means too. And this is a win-win situation. The citizens win because they get stable employees that are dedicated to this county, that want to be here, and are able to support their families. The agency wins. Everybody wins in this program. Like, you know, the chief says, "It's the first step now." I'm really excited about it. And if you can't tell, this is me being excited. But anyway, I'm really excited about it because it's a huge step. And I love this county. I've put 25 years of blood, sweat, and tears with most of these guys behind me into this county. And we sit around and we talk about the things that we've done together, that we've accomplished. We've spoke of our setbacks. And these guys up here, we're all in this together. We're a family. And I'm going to stop here in a minute. But it's great that we're finally seeing light at the end of the tunnel. It's because we've scratched and clawed long enough. And I implore you to vote for this budget because I think it's going to be a great step for Henry County, a great day in Henry County. And we're going to start retaining employees. Now, I'm not naive enough to know we're going to retain 100%, but we've got to stop this 80% of five years and under. And these young men and women that are coming to us, they are great folks. They're great folks. They've got the heart, they've got the drive, they've got the desire to do it. We've just got to give them the financial means to stay here.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. For me, it's a different, just a little different thought. I walked in the door at Henry County 25 years ago as a young man, as a 911 operator. We did everything with paper and pencil. This year, we processed over 240,000 911 calls in our center. One of the most important things that's happened in this process is my counterparts have bought into and they believe that 911 is a critical part of public safety. When you think about 911, the worst part of someone's nightmare starts with that phone call. And we have a group of dedicated professionals, public safety professionals, that are there to answer those calls. And they answer the worst calls, the murders, and then go to the shots. And it's just a continual process. This will provide us an opportunity and a pathway for our department to develop public safety professionals. As 911 evolved, we're going to a process now where we will be doing 911, next generation 911. And it requires us to bring in dedicated and trained professionals. I'm so grateful at the opportunity to be a part of this organization, a part of this family for over 25 years. I can't say enough about the people that do the work at the 911 center. And to the board members, I personally thank each of you for your understanding in the job we do and the stress that's on a 911 operator. I believe it's compared second only to air traffic controller. We put people in a room for eight hours a day. We give them two 15-minute breaks. And we ask them to deal with the most worst parts of our lives in our community. And we're forever grateful to you for understanding that and believing in the work and the mission of our department. And this will provide us an opportunity to continue to build on the work we do. Thank you so much.[1580.54][1580.54](APPLAUSE)
Well, I appreciate you guys coming out. As everybody knows, I'm going to town hall this Saturday. And we're actually going to be going a little more in depth. Because again, this isn't just as simple as just a pay raise. This is an entire new structure. So, please come out. It's at Mosley Park at 9 o'clock. Chief, be there. You will not, wedding anniversary of...
The 25th anniversary.
That's right. Mr. Ash, you going to be there?
I should be there. I will have a dedicated person there.
Excellent, excellent. We expect the ASO. But stay up here what we're going to do, guys. We're going to have two votes. This first vote is just for the reset. When we get through the second one, then we can celebrate. Stay close.
Anybody else like to make a comment? Any board members like to make a comment? If not, we have a resolution to board of commissioners authorizing acceptance of the 2016 Henry County Public Safety proposed pay grade and starting salaries. Have a motion from District Three, second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Why are we clapping for ourselves? We clap for ourselves. You want to just move right into the next one? Since we already displayed it?
That was Ms. Sorrow saying yes. That wasn't a board member. So, yes, sir, please.
Does somebody move that we approve the resolution for fiscal year 2016-2017 budget?
So, I moved.
Have a motion District Four. Second District Two, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Consent agenda. The following agenda shall be considered a consent agenda. Before voted on a consent agenda, the chairman will provide an opportunity to add a delete. Does anybody like to add to a delete from the consent agenda item? Resolution to approve the Henry County Government probation service plan. Resolution to renew an annual maintenance agreement for Sun Guard ERP and public safety software. Does somebody move we approve the consent agendas as published? Have a motion District Three, Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Part of the requirements is the board agrees to levy the ad valorem tax in order to pay it. Of course, the tax is never levied. The money is derived directly from the ESPLAS sales tax, but the law does require that you levy it, and we would appreciate if you would do that. Be glad to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir. District Two.
Buddy, first of all, you know, you guys always ran one of the, I thought, we do a good job with our ESPLAS, but always the school system, because the capital projects are always much, much bigger with a high school. I don't even know what it's up to now, but it's probably over $50 million.
Fifty to 52 million.
So the one question I had was, when I was looking at this, was the deferment of principal, was that, just out of curiosity, is that, was there a reason? I know if Jeff and you put it together, I figured there was probably a reason on it.
It was based on the interest rate. It was based upon the term of the bonds, and we came out extremely well. Matter of fact, we generated about $38 million above what we had anticipated the face amount of the bonds being. So we came out extremely well.
So is the interest not really what the interest is? Because there's some premiums and other things that discount it?
It is. It's the premiums, it's the discounts, it is the interest rate, it's the length of them, it's the no-call provision on parts of them and call provisions on other. It's just a long list of factors that the market takes into consideration, and as you know, Jeff is, he's just absolutely the best. So.
That's all I had, Jim.
Anybody else have any questions? Not have a resolution before you providing for the levy and collection of an annual ad valorem tax to provide funds for the payment of the principal and interest on $214,255,000 in aggregate principal amount of Henry County School Board General Obligation Bond Series 2016. Somebody move in that direction.
So move.
Have a motion from District Five. Have a second District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you all.
Resolution approving the creation of a date fund oversight committee to ensure the fair and appropriate distribution of the funds of the general correction county ability accountability courts. The Honorable Ernest D. Blunt. Greetings.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, how are y'all doing tonight?
Good.
Good. This is something that we've been talking about in the past, and I have presented it to the board a couple of times. I think that you gentlemen all understand what this is to do. It's to help us make sure that the date funds are not depleted so we can continue the accountability courts. And I have worked with the county attorney for the language and the staff with other commissioners to make sure the language is correct, and this is going to be something that I believe will be very beneficial to maintain the integrity of the courts and the continued very, 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 very good outcome, and it's just been really good. We've had a really great response, and we've had huge success with all of these accountability courts as opposed to putting the people either in jail or in prison. Going into an accountability court has turned out to be something very beneficial. So it's a good thing.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? I yield the floor to District Four.
Judge, I just want to thank you for what you do. I get to spend a lot of time with the police officers, and they get to tell me about how this works and how their frequent flyers are not frequent flyers anymore.
Yes.
And we really appreciate it. I don't know if a lot of people get to see and understand because they're not there, but this is a good way to keep people from going back to jail. We put them in, they come back out, they go back in, and this is a good program. I just went through an ACCG class on this, and we appreciate everything you do, and we know it's a lot of extra hours for all of you, and we appreciate the time that you put into it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comment? Have a resolution approving the creation of the date fund oversight committee to ensure a fair and appropriate distribution of the funds of the county accountability court. Somebody move in that direction.
So move.
Have a motion, District One. Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Resolution approving a utility relocation agreement between Henry County and Georgia Power Company for Campground Road, Rocky. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. Campground Road Extension is a designated ESPLAS III transportation project. Due to the construction of Campground Road Extension, it will be necessary for Georgia Power Company to relocate a portion of its facilities. A utility relocation agreement between Henry County and Georgia Power Company is needed. The estimated cost to relocate Georgia Power Company's facilities is $851,423. Georgia Power Company is requesting reimbursement for 100% of the actual relocation cost. Funding for the utility relocation is available in the project budget. Staff recommends approval of the utility relocation agreement between Henry County and Georgia Power Company for the Campground Road Extension project.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody move? We approve the resolution as read.
Move to approve.
Have a, uh...
Second.
Motion from District Four, second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution approving a right-of-way agreement between Henry County and the Georgia Department Transportation for Jodico Road at Black Hole Road.
Yes, Chairman. ESPLAS IV was approved by the voters in November 2013. Jodico Road at Black Hole Road is a designated ESPLAS IV Priority One project. Henry County agrees to abide by all state and/or federal regulations, rules, laws, and guidelines when acquiring all the necessary right-of-way for the Jodico Road, Black Hole Road ESPLAS IV intersection improvement project. The estimated right-of-way cost is $260,000 with a federal participation of $208,000 and the county participation of $52,000. If Henry County agrees to the above mention, right-of-way is to be acquired by Henry County, and Georgia DOT will reimburse up to $208,000 for right-of-way acquisition cost for the intersection improvement. Funding for right-of-way is available in the project budget. Staff recommends approving the right-of-way agreement between Henry County and Georgia Department of Transportation for the intersection improvements of Jodico at Black Hole.
Any further discussion? I yield to District Two.
Rocky, I just want to add on to some of the questions Commissioner Prince had, because I know David and his neighborhood are out there. Just so I understand procedurally and the logistics of how this will flow through, we have federal money, but then we're trying to do this. What's the process to, because I know it sounds like we're putting a traffic counter and we're going to do a local study. How will that influence, and what's the timeline so that they can also know what the next step is?
Yes, Commissioner. Once we receive the information from the study, from the warrants, if it does need or doesn't need, we will have to provide that information to Georgia DOT. If the study warrants to add a turning lane, we'll provide that information to GDOT, and of course, we'll tell them that, you know, we're with the board comments, you know, if that's the support, with their support of the commissioners, that's what we need, and hopefully, they will grant us that. So it'll be up to GDOT to extend the limits of the construction, because right now, the project kind of ends right at the entrance of their subdivision. So we will have to extend that, the implications of that. We will have to, it will cost more for the design because we'll have to, we will have to stop the right-of-way. This right here, what we're agreeing today is just to, for us to follow the rules and regulations. We have, once this is approved, GDOT will send us a letter saying, "Now you can go ahead and start acquiring right-of-way." We will not do that until the warrant study is completed, because we don't want to jeopardize that. We want to make sure that we incorporate anything from that warrant study. So once, if the study is sworn, we'll submit that to GDOT. We'll have to go back and extend, you know, we'll have to add more survey because we, of course, we don't have that information. So it would cost more funds for the county because we're already on the design phase. We already maxed out what GDOT is reimbursing us. So any additional design will have to come from the ESPLAS funds if it's available. Same thing for construction and additional right-of-way as well, if the funds are more than what is already estimated.
The question, I guess this is kind of an interactive thing. I used to live off Spears Road in Walt Stevens years ago, and I know it seemed like to me Fridays were the worst day when everybody was trying to cut through, to get off 75 and, you know, and we're 675 merges. Are we going to have the traffic study done at least on one of those heavy days before school gets out? Is it starting any time now?
We'll definitely do the traffic study, and I can get them to be out there, put traffic counters also as well Friday. You know, apparently, they were not there today, so.
I think your plan was to do it today.
It was today, today.
Tomorrow and Thursday.
Right. So we can, since, you're correct, Friday is a heavy...
Isn't Friday still historically one of the worst days?
Friday is Saturday.
Yeah.
So what we can do, Commissioner, we can, if they haven't done it, tomorrow, make sure that at least we put the 24-hour counters on Friday to be able to catch up that traffic from Friday. In addition to that, once we get that information, we'll be able to determine what we're going to be doing, you know, if we're going to add the turning lane or not. Then another thing, if by any chance we cannot add the turning lane, we can probably do some options afterwards, and we'll, we can discuss that as well, if there's other options that we can do if GDOT does not allow us to do that. But the first thing will be do the study, bring it to the GDOT attention, and see if they would allow us to extend the project, the limits of construction. Like I said before, any additional funds that are above and beyond what GDOT has already established, the county will have to be responsible for those additional funds.
Okay. Thank you, Rocky.
Anybody else got any questions or comment? Have a resolution on the floor? Have a motion from District Two.
Second.
Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Next, we will have an appeal hearing. Dangerous dog classification. The dog owner is Andrew Sillow, and Jury Yogurt, the Animal Patrol Director, will make the presentation, and then we'll go from there.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. If my teeth are chattering a little bit, I apologize. The back of the room is quite cold.
That keeps us awake.
Yeah, it is, it is, it's chilly. We're here this evening for a dangerous dog. Appeal hearing was requested by Mr. Andrew Satal. Mr. Satal does reside with his mother at 1904 Chadbury Walk. That's in Stockbridge, Georgia. The home is in Monarch Village subdivision, which is in District Five. To be classified as a dangerous dog, a dog must meet one of three descriptions. It's either a dog that bites a person unprovoked, but the injuries that the person sustained doesn't meet the definition of a serious injury, or a dog that aggressively attacks in a manner that causes a person to reasonably believe that the dog poses an imminent threat of serious injury even though no such injury occurs, or a dog fall off the owner's property kills a pet animal. On the evening of Monday, April 4th, 2016, Mr. Satal's gray and white female pit bull and a brindle male pressa canario that Mr. Satal had agreed to keep for a friend jumped out of a window of his residence and attacked and killed a small Chihuahua-type dog that was being walked on leash by Ms. Sharon Farrington's nine-year-old daughter Alexandria. Neither Mr. Satal nor his mother were at home at the time of the incident. Ms. Farrington's daughter luckily was not injured. However, she ran home to get her mother, who returned to find Mr. Satal's two dogs killing their family pet. E-911 was contacted, and Henry County on-call officer Brian Long was dispatched along with three Henry County police officers. Both dogs were still unrestrained and running through the neighborhood when ACO Long and PD officers arrived. Contact was eventually made with Mr. Satal's mother, who came home and was able to get both dogs back into the residence. Mr. Satal then came home and brought both dogs out of the residence and to our animal control vehicle for transport to the shelter. The owner of the pressa canario, Mr. Brandon Lane, came to the shelter and signed over ownership of his pressa canario to our department. Mr. Satal, however, stated his desire to reclaim his dog. I advised him that due to the nature of the incident, his dog would be classified under, excuse me, county ordinances and state law as a dangerous dog. He was notified of the classification verbally and by regular and certified mail, and Mr. Satal appealed the classification on April 14th, 2016. If the dangerous dog classification is upheld, Mr. Satal has 20 days to satisfy the requirements to possess a dangerous dog, obtain a dangerous dog certificate from our department, pay all fees associated with his dog's impalement and housing at the shelter, and finally, to remove his dog from the shelter. Officer Brian Long with the Animal Control Department is here this evening, as is Ms. Farrington and her daughter Alexandria, and also Mr. Satal is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions of the director at this time? If not, we'll hear from Mr. Satal if you'd be kind enough to state your case and why the board should take action on this or not take action.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here today because my dog Roxy is supposedly about to be classified as a dangerous dog. I have had Roxy since she was six months old, and I've never had any incidents up until Roxy's puppies were born. Now, the first incident that happened with them, everything that's happened in the past were with the other dogs, which are now put down as of November, so I no longer have those dogs. All I have now is just Roxy and a mixed-breed dog. I was watching Trina for a friend, and of course, I was at work, so I don't know exactly what happened, but I do have video proof of witnesses who told me the next day of exactly what happened during the incident. They told me that the young lady trespassed, she was walking her dog into my backyard, which caused my friend's dog to jump out of the window and attacked her dog. Now, they said, which if you guys would like to see the video, that my dog Roxy was sitting in the backyard the entire time. When I came home later that night after receiving the call from 911 that my dogs were loose on the property, Animal Control told me that they were there because the neighbor called and said that the brindle pressa canario was loose and that the only reason they were taking Roxy was because Roxy was off of the leash. So I'm just trying to understand, why is it that they're trying to base a past history of other dogs that are now dead onto Roxy, who has never had any problem with any dogs in the neighborhood?
So you're saying your dog did not kill this other little dog?
No, sir. It was the pressa canario who did, and it was the witnesses who told me what happened the next day. And actually, the witness who lived next door to me, who called the police about the pressa canario, he told me that it was only the pressa canario that he seen outside. And I also have a picture of like the blood spot that was in the driveway on my property.
Do you have any, the people that owned the dog, are they here?
Ms. Farrington and her daughter, who was walking the dog at the time, are both here.
Before she speaks, Jay, do we have any proof that the pit bull was the dog that killed the, okay.
That's why I called as witness.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Farrington, and this is my daughter Alexandria. The witnesses that Mr. Satal is talking about are all 10 and under. They're friends of my daughters, okay? So the only witness that was there to this was myself and my daughter. The children that he is talking about was two streets over in a home, because they were all scared, and I have a picture of that. Their mothers were all called to pick them up. When my daughter was attacked, and she ran home, which is five doors down from my house, I was in the kitchen. I ran out, got in my car, and we drove up to Mr. Satal's home. We... of other dogs that are now dead onto Roxy, who has never had any problem with any dogs in the neighborhood?
So, you're saying your dog did not kill this other little dog?
No, sir. It was the pressa canario who did, and it was the witnesses who told me what happened the next day. And actually, the witness who lived next door to me, who called the police about the pressa canario, he told me that it was only the pressa canario that he seen outside. And I also have a picture of like the blood spot that was in the driveway on my property.
Do you have any, the, the people that, that owned the dog, are they here?
And her daughter, who was walking the dog at the time, are both here.
That the pit bull was the dog that killed the, okay.
That's why I called as witness.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Farrington, and this is my daughter Alexandria. The witnesses that Mr. Satal is talking about are all ten and under. They're friends of my daughters. Okay? So, the only witness that was there to this was myself and my daughter. The children that here, he is talking about was two streets over in a home, because they were all scared, and I have a picture of that. Their mothers were all called to pick them up. When my daughter was attacking, she ran home, which is five doors down from my house. I was in the kitchen. I ran out, got in my car, and we drove up to Mr. Satal's home. We were as close as from here, and that was his driveway. I tried to get out of my car, and his pit bull, the smaller dog, attacked me. It came after me. I ran back into my car to get the dog stick, and the dog was standing at my door while the bigger dog was biting my small dog. And they both went back and forth. Every time the bigger dog dropped the dog, my dog, his smaller dog picked up my dog, and they went back and forth.
Which one was the pit bull?
Excuse me?
You said you got a large dog, you got a small dog. Which was, was the pit bull?
The pit bull is a smaller dog.
The smaller dog?
Right. They both attacked my daughter. My daughter has scratches on the inside of her thigh. She, when she, before, when she was walking home, he's correct, when he said she cut through his yard. He is correct, because all the kids cut through all of those yards. They're not fenced. She cut through the yard to bring the puppy home. When she got about two doors down from his driveway, that's when the, his dogs came and grabbed her. They didn't grab her on his property. She bent down to pick boots up, and both dogs jumped on her. She has scratches on two different parts of her body. Okay? When she decided to drop the dog, she ran out of her shoes and came home. By the time I came back up, every child on that street was locked up two doors, two streets over. There was no one outside, and every time someone tried to come outside, the dogs would attack them, including his next-door neighbor, who stayed into the house until the police officer came. The police officer was the first on the scene. When he came in, he decided to stay in his car, because he did not want to use his gun.
Saying, you're saying both dogs attacked your dog?
Yes. Sir, my daughter and I were the only one there. All the witnesses he's talking about were being picked up by their moms, because they were too afraid to come outside.
Young lady, did you see the pit bull attack, attack your dog? And you saw the big dog attack your dog? Okay. So, Jerry, I mean, to me, this is an open and shut case.
I'm sorry. I have one other thing to say, sir. I am not mad at the dogs. Mr. Satal has had four different cases in our subdivision. Okay? His irresponsibility of containing his dogs is causing a huge issue.
Pit bulls are dangerous. I mean, I have a, a good friend who used to sleep in the bed with her pit bull, and she said, and she used to tell me that it was the safest dog that she had ever owned, until one day, she woke up with her face in the pit bull's mouth. She had to have total reconstruction on her face. So, I believe pit bulls are dangerous pets, especially if they're uncontained, and if you don't have the ability to contain your dog, especially if it's a pit bull, it's a danger, you know, and, and the pit bull has the opportunity to go out and attack people and other animals, it's a dangerous pet. And I believe that the other pet should be classified as dangerous as well. Okay. I, I remember reading that.
Any other Commissioner have a comment this time or questions? I'll yield the floor for the final closing arguments from the...
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, I'd like to ask a couple of questions, just to make sure we have a complete record, if that's...
I yield the floor to the distinguished county attorney.
Ms. Farrington?
Yes.
Did I catch your name correctly?
Yes, sir.
When, were you there when the, when the, when your dog was attacked?
The initial attack, no. My daughter was the one, the dog attacked her first.
Right.
She, it took her maybe thirty seconds to get to the house, because she was three doors down from the home. The garage door was in, open, she ran in. I was in the kitchen, I jumped in my car and drove out. So, yes, I was there for the attack, but it was afterward.
Where, where was your dog attacked? Where, whose property did that take place on?
It was between Mr. Satal's, whose, which house was it, sweetie? Steven's house is one, two, three doors from my house, and three doors from Mr. Satal's house.
Okay. And you said your daughter was scratched? Did she have any punctures in her skin?
No, there were no punctures. That night, honestly, we called the ER, we called the Children's Center. They said as long as there were no open wounds. And trust me, a gentleman was running, we looked, we couldn't find anything, but two days later, the welts of the scratch came up.
Okay. That's, that's all I've needed to ask, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I yield the floor to the defendant.
I understand that these kids are, you know, her age or whatnot, but these are their friends. They live in, they live, they're my neighbors. They live directly in the backyard of me. They come over and they see my dogs in the backyard all the time, and they speak to them. I have actual, there's video proof of these kids, and Steven, who she says, whose house it happened in front of, who says that it did not, the dog, Roxy, was inside of her backyard the entire time. So, and then the neighbor who called the police, who was afraid to come out of his house, said that, he's, he's the adult, he said that it was only the pressa canario that he seen outside. So, at the same time, there's, you know, the dog was at the house, or either she was on the property at the time of the incident. The dog attack happened in front of Steven's house, but there was only one blood spot in my driveway. There wasn't a blood trail or anything. It was a dry night, and it hasn't rained for a couple of days. I have a picture of the blood spot in my driveway. There was no blood trail leading nowhere. I have, my dog plays with numerous dogs in the neighborhood. I have video proof of that. I just don't understand how, you know, the dogs that died in the past, all of this is now falling on Roxy, when everybody is saying that it was just the pressa canario that did the killing.
Anybody have any questions? I yield the floor to District one.
How you doing, sir?
Hello.
I understand the dog jumped out a win, open window? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think you just stated your backyard was fenced in. It's fenced in?
No.
Oh, it's not? Okay. That's really not, that's a question I was going to ask. If it jumped out the window, was it out the back or the front?
Can I say one last thing, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
I am not, the dog is not the issue. It is the owner of the dog. Again, this is the fourth attack since two thousand and fourteen. The month before, I'm sorry, three months before me, the gentleman in my cul-de-sac, Mr. Bernard, his dog was attacked and killed by one of Mr. Satal's dogs. This is the fourth attack. Are we going to wait till he, his dog actually kills someone? There's at least thirty children running in that cul-de-sac on a daily basis. It is summertime. Mr. Satal has proven that he is not responsible enough to even own a parakeet, much less a dog. So, we are asking you to please, please, make sure that he never, he, he currently has a dog at the house, that he walks every morning. My daughter has to pass his house to go to the bus stop. I drop her every morning to the bus stop, because we're afraid that this event will reoccur.
Is this the same dog, are these four...
No, he has another dog in the house.
Okay, I yield the floor.
I understand that, you know, there are kids in the neighborhood, but these kids are defending Roxy in this case. They're defending her and saying that she has nothing to do with it. She's terrified that the dog will attack these kids. These kids are defending her, pretty much saying that they know her on a regular basis, and, come on now, this...
I yield the floor to District three.
You know, Mr. Satal, I'm sitting here listening to this, and I agree with Commissioner Holmes. I, I think there's no question about what happened, and all these so-called witnesses that you're talking about, you're not producing not one hit tonight. And Ms. Farrington, I believe you, I believe your daughter, and I'm just so thankful that your daughter wasn't injured, no more than she was. That's all I'm going to say about it.
Any other questions for the defendant or Animal Control? If not, we have a resolution in the board in length, and it says the evidence supports the finding that Andrew Satal's dog, as described, is a dangerous and classification is upheld, or the evidence does not support the finding. So, if some Commissioner liked it...
Yeah, first of all, I just want to tell the young lady, I'm, I'm glad that you're safe and you're okay, and I'm going to move to approve that this dog is classified as a dangerous dog.
We have a motion, we have second?
Second.
Second District three, all in favor, anybody got any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. We really appreciate it.
Y'all want to take a five-minute break before we move on with these zoning? Okay, I'm, I'm sure in eight-thirty, we're going to take a five-minute break, recess, and we'll be back in five minutes.